Good evening. The October 16th, 2025, meeting of the Corvallis School Board is now called to order at 6:33 PM. To support the health and safety of all community members, particularly those who are immunocompromised and their families, the board continues to offer a virtual participation option for members and district staff. Is available at select meetings and variables on how to. Link to the district's YouTube channel found on the school board. And recordings are typically the following. Tonight, we have Donna, Therese, Bernie, and my attendants in person. Item on the. It's People's Day, and I did want to say it is passing which was on Monday. Make sure to.
Be described as having this came upon.
Whereas Columbia. America has led to the intro. Transatlantic slave exposition. Indigenous Peoples and whereas the city of Corvallis and day Benton County. Kalapuyia people before removal for settlers.
Whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more. This community, nation, and world. To equity and.
This Corvallis School District has. Weekly re. Community and whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse.
Where. Recognize the significant contributions made in our community by. Commits to ensure.
The idea of indigenous. Was for. And by a delegation of native nations to the United Nations and.
Whereas the state of Oregon recognize Columbus. The city of. October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Corvallis since 2050.
Whereas the state of Oregon. October as a Peoples' Day in Oregon since 20. As this day should be recognized for the. Because. Bought by the Board of Education of School District do proclaim. Twenty twenty as well as the second Monday of October as in. And strongly in. And members to join. Local and. And encourage all. Health. Appropriate ways. Country. Peoples to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically. Times. October.
Briefly also say that. Indigenous Peoples' Day. At here. Side Portland. Okay, the next agenda is board member. Have a report? Shana and then Chris.
Been a lot happening. Things that I know. Other board members too are listening sessions related to. And so it's. And. Was to be able to sit with community to hear from family members, staff, students, and others. So thank. Engage in. We collect feedback. The appreciated opportunity to be at several of the listening sessions. I've also had a. Of some of the innovation. Which. Consolidation discussion, so won't get too far into that, but it's been really inspiring. The educators coming together and. But. In Corv. Unity with students, with community. Like so there's a lot of. With. Community I know in different becoming that very just honored and grateful. Certainly had. Conversations from the innovation team. Partners and families. In terms of things are the skills. For Corvallis graduate. Community members for families and. Engage.
Hi to. Have much. Listening sessions together and. Able to have time. I really. All the effort into. Um Kelly. All the. Appreciate it. They also. Do Osborne update. And I also wanted to shout out Kim Patton for. Um. Really making it easy for. No very little. Is going on there at the pool and working along with the city. So I that and it was. Think you know we. Um very appreciative of having that information. So. Schools and who have been doing open. Um invited to come in and. In the schools and just felt very welcome. I know that that's. For teaching staff to put those together. I just really appreciate that. Who also was able to. Able to. This night. And I. Out to. Putting together a great evening of just really good information and connecting with people. Was told her last night that that meeting fills my bucket. Fill um just. Some of our. It's really positive.
Any other board members? Sammy?
I'll just highlight. Ended the. Grateful to have the opportunity to attend them. One of them, they range from. Leave around fifty or in the case of one community that was. Three board. Excuse myself from that one and I trust that's it was really great to see the intentionality of. Intentionality of. There. In every language, neighborhoods as possible times, and I have seen the diversity of community. Uh to. I want to really give credit to Kim and the school district. I know you will hear it. It's his partnership between the city. To. Above and beyond to strengthen that partnership and focus on delivering value for our community members to be. Swimming pool. All highlights I did not get, but I want to share my appreciation to. Him for for a multitude of programs. Yesterday, there was. Fishing bands and in a couple of weeks on orchestra. So I just want to say thank you for the invitations and I'll do my best.
The Osborne. Even the. Ended that and it was really nice to walk, talk with people. With updates as well. Um I was able to go to one listening session, but in the one I couldn't was because of a work. And um. Being able to hear directly from. The reports. Here from Peoples and. In those spaces and then. Meetings that. I'd say. Those conversations and then I was at the D E D I and Delta meeting because of a work conflict as well for. Um evening programming this month is a lot, but um and then also the student orientation um last time. So that was. Able to see everybody there. And so that's for that part. And then the next thing on the. And. Situation. I can, since this is the Oregon one and then. And for the OSBA board and learn about the policy updates. Putting at the state level to guide the work of OSBA. Local board, especially through their policies. And training. And guidance on under budget cuts on local districts. And so that's really great information to share with our board folk in the region. The fall. Next week for. Lincoln one. So if you have not signed up for that, if you're available, I would encourage you to attend that. They also have national. National. Presentations um with Kim and Brian or. Uh with. As well. So I'm looking forward to. Details and um. Things about that. The community. So go ahead, Sammy.
Thank you, Chair. So as a reminder, I want to thank. I bear for her. As a president of the Color Caucus, representative for Lynn Benton region. I'll add one more thing. I would like to encourage my colleagues. Um a community member. Other. Purge their boards to vote for Representative on Benton, Lincoln region. To retain her. Has brought to our board region and to Oregon has been. We nominated her in every board will. Presenting the region. So I would encourage my colleagues, shout to our colleagues across. On the national level, I came back from Salt Lake. Regional meeting for states, regions. I've. Corvallis and Oregon and states on the national board that has been funding the national board. So taxpayers did not directly contribute to. This travel. However, I was able to learn a lot. Learned that I would like. I will share them in a. Uh. Uh moving uh from the table from both sides, there is a best practice handbook. It's achievement in public. Achievement in public. From the Office of the. Leader General in Utah. And any commuting member to see this report is. From. General website. Utah legislator. And. They had an auditor who. School district similar to. Bill sentiments. And well do. So during the presentation, I pulled up Oregon School Board Association, OSBA's uh evaluation thirteen stands. Which they overlap. Believe they can. Uh but there are some layers that. Learn from them as. They interview. They interviewed. And also they entered. School level and. They have best practices uh that they can um provide positive feedback, school districts, school boards and schools. So I would like. Share this with you and I'll share with OSBA as well. I have three copies if you to borrow a hard copy. From the. AI framework and. It was really in. Uh training the best I ever had so far. Uh I believe from either Utah Nevada, and I have the contact information for the person who shared some best practices about tools. Can search. Purchasing agreements where. Uh can have an agreement of tools that has been. To actually. And maintain. Uh observe. A better value. For multitude. Back I received. Air. The last minute. Uh tomorrow I'm joining the first legislative committee on the National School Board Association. The legislative committee. Do things. One of them review the legislative priorities for the committee. Uh as you may know, NSBA is uplifting the full funding of. Or special education, uplifting uh title funding, protecting title. Uh including other priorities. So I would like to invite you, if you have any maybe during the comments period right now or uh between today and tomorrow morning, happy to forward those on the. Uh also, we have a legislative government's relation manager who has been retained to really help us advocate with uh members of Congress each. From both parties and and to uh support education during these times. So that will be the charge of the committee and I'm honored to be one of five members from the NSBA board to represent the committee.
Sammy and just as. The national and state. At our local districts and being involved. Being that. And see. These that are being passed national. Since there are some of us that are representing that. But uh next on. Is the superintendent's report.
Because. To happen. So just a couple of things to highlight. The first one is that this is National Week and I know several. Lunch. So it's an opportunity to. Not as a reminder to our community, lunches are made available free of charge to students, which is a. Here in. Osborne Aquatic Survey. So if. Fill that. Put into the priority areas. We'd appreciate you all doing that. Again. Okay, at the E S D. Able to make that. I'm sure that they will be talking about the. The. Challenges that we. Were. So. Um next. That is.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh the next on the agenda is public comment. Now open the public comment period. This is of students. Comment as an. Moment. Our. Generation table outside. And. I'll now. And it is your turn to speak. Please. Take a seat. Microphone too. Um. Teachers may offer. ism of district operation. Not. Personnel. You will have. The light will be green when your time starts. Right here. Uh when you have thirty. Red. Need to um. Follow. But we'll have three minutes. To engage in conversation. Members would like to revisit. During public comment. Agenda and again, um some folk have heard me say this before, but that's a really um hard part. Engage in conversation. During public comment period. Before you start your comments, please, please your name for the record and state. The school. Oh, we have an online one.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Eric. Twenty twenty one and I reside within the district boundary. I want to start by stating that I oppose closing shuttlin and converting interview to a K through eight for many reasons presented by others at the. I favor a plan which. Two schools instead. Their community members. I want to locate the pervasive narrative that I have heard these previous sessions regarding. This narrative assumes that. Uh that. Has. Kids who get to remain in close knit classes longer. I'd like you to consider the experience. My virgin students. To tell you about my autistic friend's experience in the district. Mission to use her. complement. Struggled to catch up to grade level. In sixth grade, she discovered art through the exploratory. Having. Love about school and a subset of the day to look forward to every day. She became more. Began catching. June, she graduated with a bachelor's degree in mathematics and she credits her middle. Of for inspiring. Been feeling nurtured. Apple. Classrooms and schedule blocks for each gave me a foundation on which. I form friendship. Schedule. On to the minute, offered more stability than I ever felt in. Did environment. Stability of maintain. Overing. Find the. Cultivating passions that I still have. Rather than feeling lost in the social dynamics of elementary. Six. To flourish, setting me up. In high school and beyond. While these stories are not rep. The entire student population. Population. Consider how your. Just those reflected in aggregate data.
In the board?
Eric uh input. Is closing two element. Correctly, the rationale is to retain the K. Them to. Of. My question, if I understand that. My question for you. Elementary school. Challenged by uh capacity. We don't, if we don't have the capacity. Could you uplift? What is it in the sixth grade experience in the middle school? Said that.
Um. I think it would be difficult to maintain that in a K three. One thing I would recommend. More. Over their schedule by. At the beginning of the. Okay, um that's something that is really helpful in the middle school model. Um. If the schedule was like put up on the. Day and. Really chaotic.
You in K through. Schedule. Before.
Yeah. Preferably a whole week before if possible. That way you can prepare over.
Any other questions? Thank you. Shauna, you there? Sha.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Just a second.
Yep, can you hear me now?
You guys off in your mic.
Can um? Hear me now?
Yeah.
So. So it's hard time following and realize it was my turn. Okay. Miss JPM. School district. Southern Shell one. Fully concerned that the bulk of the decision uh. School consolidation is already. I'll just check in boxes off. And receive all the. Productive, but you know. Can paddle with district plan. The report tell them basically the same. The current plan, we still see. For later. Consult. Waiter when the innovation team figures something else out. What are we doing about the C V? That you know, C V has essentially. We'll think about in three years. You know, if we. Than that year anyway. FAQ. If they're coming up with these ideas, I'd. And tell them to come back when their idea. Pushed out and we've done tied up. Ten years plan. Looking for unserious ideas. They're not gonna do. Just do a two million dollars a year. That will help balance the next three years. Well, yeah, I agree. I'll do our jobs and I hope we can be working together as a community.
Thank you. And does anybody have any questions from the board?
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I'm. Don't reside in the district, but I've worked in the district for ten years. Leaders at Bessie Coleman. Um. Quickly. Decisions about. Really spent time in the classroom and that's not. Might have come in any way. Observation. Hope for you to come in. Students. In the hall. Just those quick. And only passing by like very. I don't know if you've ever been. And so I want to make sure you know that anytime you're welcome to come in and have that experience with me. And real quick, I want to shout out Chris Hawkins. Um. Very hard morning and you're so kind and gentle with us. Um seeing you on the ground with. Tense right now. Can be kind of. In deficit sometime. To see those. I don't want you to come in for the negative. I want you to come in and experience the. Um and. I want you to get to experience firsthand the amazing things that our kids are doing. See. And seeing our students. We get to hang out with these cool humans. Um they. Actives are. The ones who really know our student. Strengths. Um we know. Um we want the best for them because we deserve the best that we can give them. Um the only way. Is going to be able to do that. If we're at our. The current. Nation plan. And teachers are already worried about not having a job. Involuntary.
Your classroom.
Um I work at Crescent Valley. Time on. Okay, um shoot me an email. Um and I can figure all that.
I'm gonna um. Before. Or. Us. Know.
About like what do I want to? When I see you. I don't know. It's just really. Always so much more and I'm always wishing like. Stayed around to see the. And this. Um and those. Pens, you know, like there's just, it's. Really get to show. Wondering like has anyone. Um and. Like I would just start that conversation.
Thank you. And then my uh. And you. All. To. Oh. For it. Would you be able to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kira. And then. Yeah.
Uh. Live within. Actually work at. Three um working. So. Um. I've had minimal interaction. District office staff. My five years as a mental health skills. And it continues to be true at the beginning of my second year in the S E G. Um those. Have made me feel concerned. Upset with. Of in-person connection. And under. Uh and staff. The district level. Injury that my. When you can. Most. Prize. And. Be surrounded. In my view. Committed. Safety of its students and staff and the district has been okay. Eoer result. Eoer results. Pertain. It's unbelievably hard work. To be involved in a. Sometimes spending up to three minutes in a break space using. Us to protect. Tears are frequently part of this experience and. Sometimes. Us out of. The. E five. The urgent care. I'm not talking about minor. I'm talking about concussion. Ands. We have to return to work, continue to support students. Physical and emotional. Have done that kind of work. Never done that kind of work. We. Want to kill. In the break space. Job is not for every. Shouldn't be. Skill. Again, to support students in the S E G to develop healthy. Expressing anger or frustration. More than what is currently happening. But at the administrative level. Spoken about the. Did updates. Do you? Only tells.
Your time is up, I may have to ask you to.
Could you? Maybe a minute more. Perfect. Um. He puts into the importance of. The. Staff who spend the most time. Working with students in the S. Their. Words, my response. Highly trained mental health. And higher. To help reimagine. Waits, the. In the alter. G and bridges. They. Memory, wear. Amendment to safety. While being for students and staff. Physical incidents at the elementary level. Who is going to. Respect what we bring. Us to make this program safer. Everyone. Do. Deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
It was already on. Hi. And the boundary. Have two. When we talk about capital. Money budgets costs. It's not about what we spend on our kids, but what we build in them. Knowledge, creative. Confidence. Develop over time. It's what. And see where they fit into the world. Together, those things form path. Efficacy. Believe in themselves that. These transportation routes. Talking about is disrupting the. And. Kids. Means few. To participate. When the number of programs teams. Is narrows access. Team. Art class. And those. Pride. But. Ability. Always show up in data right. Up in money. You. Few. Size. And over. Thing we are. It. Then. Human capital isn't about X. It's about relationship. And it's. Meaningful, and when those conditions weaken, our whole community loses some of its collective strength. Or moving forward. Ask. Resources. Down the most valuable. Purpose and possibility. Once those pathways. They're so very hard.
Oh, sorry, Sammy.
Is is that there were sets of goals, including the school board goal equity, um. The programs that we want to protect. Uh, saving the. For the value they bring. Party that you think we. Can meet the promise that you. The human, human capital preserving and focusing on relationships, part and belonging. Is there anything missing? Or you want to?
Lot of. And. Particularly in the. From these. Community schools are referred to as like our element. But. Crescent Valley is a community school. Lost in. Is things that. Of all of the. Community, not just. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no further. Now closed. Thank you, everybody, bringing your voices in for this, um, for the public comment period. Before we get started. Since it is a larger block of time, we're gonna go ahead and take a short break at this time, and then we'll.
Okay.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. The, um, next item on the agenda is the con- consolidation, work time, and discussion, so. Um, I'm gonna turn it over.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna give a little bit of, uh. Information for you as we move into. I forward an. Proposal, again, an initial. For your feed. Since that time. Packet, we've included the. Questions doc. The information in those. Through. The listening sessions where one of the questions is about questions that folks have, also. Well, sometimes they. And. That, um, as well. Like you. Have continued to update that. Also. Questions, um, out of listening sessions, we asked. To take all of the information. Through. Our code, through the listening. And also through all. Saved and put that together into. Um, they broke down four questions into themes and subthemes and into. Related to each of the four questions that. Uh, also in your packet. But at the same time, if there's. Thing. Proposals you want to. Meeting tonight, or by the conclusion of the meeting tonight, so we can. Get that information. To make a decision. State, um, how this process. On, I think it's. Ish. In such a way that. Individuals are able to. If that's not. Vantage point or a con, to be able to ask the. Getting a safe space for those. I know that topic that had a lot of, um. Members, and I also. Listening, um, you've been thought. You to be able to. Um, so I'm going to answer the question. Space for you to ask. Um, and again, at the end of. The meeting, I'd like to have. Our team. Um, that would be valuable to know. Um, so what I've. Better a list. Things I think would help us in this conversation, uh, moving forward. So what are our long-term goals for student learning, equity, and community engagement? How does our current proposal support or hinder those goals? What values and priorities have we heard? How does our current proposal support or hinder those goals? What values and priorities have we heard from stakeholders so far? How do we define success once consolidation occurs? And then finally, the one that I've mentioned or alluded to a couple of times, what direction or next steps do you have for me as to the board? So what I was hoping to do is work our way through those questions. I also want to make sure that because this is a work session, if those questions don't align with what you, the questions that you have, I want to make sure that there's space for that as well. So I'm open to modifications if be, but I did think it was important to touch on some of those key, key aspects to any proposal that comes forward.
Thanks, Ryan.
So how does that sound to?
Sound good.
Okay, before we get started, I do want to make one point, two points that I think are important in terms of the documentation that you have. The first one is related to the stoplight report. And in that we read consolidation or closure of two our thinking around that was details to it about if we those students are close to the current local school, buildings would go beyond if you boundary of district. We do mean significant movement in terms of that because as we were working through this since we were thinking had a question come looking at it differently and isn't on this document, which was the request from Sammy. But the last main section there is there targets as 24 basically by grade to make that were actually it grows a little bit by based on grade level. That I thought we should clarify after. So those Yeah.
For this on the number for the the target class size 24, what's for Franklin for six, seven compared to the other?
It's the same as at the other.
Okay, so we just here that
There are more clarification on those. Go ahead, Sammy.
First of all, I want to thank the team for providing this data. Help us to advisors to the board, our student representatives, and I want to comfortable all questions or insights. My question is, this is still a point of one may ask with the enrollment being but not as still declining since the 70s. Is there any insights you believe these two years? So much opportunity if I have to project for 28, 29, 20, and third and beyond this snapshot.
That are nine, 10th, 11th grade cohorts. K three cohorts are at three as we've talked about year. Based on birth rates, cohorts of 500 over the the to know level, the intermediate are larger than primary grades. So it will still be some reduction in our elementary's not as say it was. But a bit more.
Thank you.
Sure.
And so that's middle school these need for middle school spaces going
Yes. You're doing sixth grade, they're out from that start.
Before we have more discuss about these are for discussion, I guess. Clarifying questions before, okay.
I'm not sure where this fit, but there's community and I we're gonna answer to the community.
Beyond the same we're doing up with all the questions that are coming.
Right. Again, that all a lot of time reading all this.
We have done the fourth section of that report, the questions we receive are to do those two to make sure
There's so much.
If you in an area that you don't feel like we're gonna FAQ. We um, we're trying to answer everything that's coming in.
Or questions that are in the
Questions during the community's
It's like, because we get, we have had many questions.
And then there's the email.
I think um, even though we're so I appreciate that they are getting put into the FAQs. Way people can see thank you for clarifying. Questions about the I answered one of them on the light report, so.
Thank you.
Clarifying question? Okay, go ahead, Teresa. A couple, but they're, I think they're quick before we have discussion. So one enroll number out and it bigger than we had is the size of closed in a significant or important way?
Since we are, that's average daily membership. So that's throughout the, so this is just a point in time. So kind of important mind, but so it would basically mean that can usually decline in enroll higher that it was more than what we projected enrollment when we last
Object of the close rules on the numbers. Um, the, as you answered the question, were you answering this schools if the sixth grade moves entry schools?
Um, we were, we've answered way. The most recent one right? Two K fives entry schools, so at middle school and the capacity towards capacity. And this is again at 91%. Keeping in mind that capacity in our mind is of that 90% sent.
Okay.
Would be 84 and Lincoln was 75.
Okay. About the you would need to close. We the middle school, the school. So doing for schools is not gonna
Close.
It's fairly close. Okay. Question, if it's I'm not, I won't The last thing I was hoping you could speak to is about the opportunities has had a chance. To start conversation. Sixth grade
Add some initial conversations about that, recognizing that we're keep up What I would say is that you, the board also that the savings there creates some additional capacity. I mean, we're this in consolidation than in the initial proposal.
On the last opportunity by going for like more aggressive and elementary. Any opportunity by going that
I think here tonight was and that decision influence communities, culture. Costs that except in making that decision. Does that does that answer your
Absolutely. Sure for community and I don't think that about we may be preserving tougher situations. In decision. Do you feel against the same from now as well?
I that's why there's about coming back to the um, I think there will be another, there will be point for this school to in this proposal to save all of, save neighborhood school. This proposal is really a and I also know the the K sixes in terms of our enrollment action and all and so have to make a decision as well. Again, it's really hard to go beyond what you in birth rates and the so just those pieces are by
Thank Ryan, I think that remind us even as board, we only have information for like five years. And so we can theorize I think we need to keep that um, as we have go ahead, Brian.
On their assumption reimbursement rate is going do you foresee a scenario where the state
So in my career in where the state pulled back the the school districts. A period of time where many school districts did for and that continue short term, understanding that that was the conversations we're having but they have one difference is that we are also as significant saving. And that was point in time, they had spent out all of their savings. So there are concerns town funding for K 12 because of things like Medicaid and how those um, and so there but but my, from that has only happened and about reserves in this school district and people have lots of those not spent at time neighboring community. One of the current current hydraulics that we have in our favor, we have those.
Understand that in the beginning of the year, you set capacity for would that capacity change once the Corvallis say there's is asking for a transfer to one school, would you change that allows more students
Do you want to talk about our transfer process?
From one to the other is policies and one of them is a resident and another policy that connection. Uh, one of those policies that if we need to do it, we can the secondary school plus or minus seven number of high school students or middle school students. That is, that exists could put that into place to make sure to hold tight to enrollment process. So we have a lot more students who transferred from CHS of boundary to CHS. So let's continue to monitor like and make sure that we're sudden more students are headed to CHS and we can't control that using
Shauna has a question.
Just fall into the discussion. So just one clarified question.
City summary. In looking at the possi- the. projected enrollment. If there was a consolidation of. Something that stood out to me as a word. Numbers. This is something I just wanted to clarify and check my math on. Percent. Ninety-four percent capacity, but would be at ninety. The. You. Percent. I just wanted to clarify that because that. The. Middle school and then seeing. Him to swing in the up. Toward an eighty-five.
Correct. Our enrollment. ization factor. So that eighty. Already applied. Correct.
Thank you. Wanted to clarify that. And for community members. When I first saw. Number.
About the, um, closure of. Um, it's a. Percent. Rating.
I thought you did. Leah.
Should be between the two high schools, um, past the twenty-eight, twenty-nine. If we. See, which I believe is. Um. Use multiple. Carry all those students at. Um, at.
There are a number of spaces that's. That are really important. Subs, um, across. Have enough science labs in one of our schools alone. We continue to improve our CTE spaces at Crescent Valley. Um, we're going to continue to need as a. And I, so those are the kind of, as we were with conversations around. And have to have in mind. And there are spaces there, um, that we would. Be able to continue to access.
Yeah. So. And is that. They also. Into those numbers and. Um, so you want to. At that high school at that time. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
How many students? As of.
Maybe.
Programs we serve, we provide there.
All right. That's including the GED.
Arm. And, um, college, hill, high school. Around that approximate number.
Just got to ask that because. Great. Thanks, everyone. Sorry. Yeah, fine.
If you, if you, we want. So just move. You've. I, um, am. My only request is that I know what I do next. And so. This.
But the questions that. The guy, the conversation again. Okay. Do these feel like ones that we can chat about?
I think is it, are they important? I don't want to use the word important. Are they valuable to chat about? Or is it better to just move a discussion?
What do you all think? I'm, I'm okay either way because I think like it's, I see value in like going over some of these to help guide the conversation. And I also know that people might want to also discuss and. So, um, just thinking about time too. So. Yeah, we spent a half hour asking clarifying questions, for example, almost. And so I want to make sure that we keep that in mind as a board. And I do think it's important that we take time in asking questions and having discussion because it's not like a, this is not a light decision by means. Um, so I just wanted to let people know that we may be asking ourselves to stay a little bit longer this evening too. I just wanted to put that out there ahead of time. Judah.
Chair, I do need to be excused at nine thirty.
Okay. Either one of you, whoever wants to say something.
I was just going to answer the question of I, I like going through the, these questions only because. Our discussions, there's just so much and I think our discussions can be very broad and involve a lot of different, going through different avenues. And this kind of gives us like a guideline where to start and bring in our discussions and our questions as we're moving along.
Is that what you were going to say, Shauna?
Yes, in a, in a sense of saying, I think they're helpful as guiding questions and maybe as themes. Because I look at it and I think, oh, one of them. Fit under the first, maybe not exactly in answering that question, but under the theme. That question. So if we can broadly define, I'd be comfortable with that.
About the same.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too. It's, uh, it's a good framework to hang. On, but I really like that we're starting with the long-term goals. I think we always. Clarification strategy, what the long-term strategy is to inform everything.
Are you facilitating the questions, Ryan, or am I doing that?
I think that at this point I'd prefer to turn it over to you.
Okay.
So that, um, it leads to more discussion rather than Q and A.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, the first question up there is what are our long-term goals for student learning? I think that's what, that's what it says. Equity and community engagement. The box is over part of it, but I thought. Was saying, um, and if you have questions that I think is a good idea, like y'all are saying, if you have questions that fall under those. Buckets, it would be a good time to bring them up too. So. Whoever wants to start answering. I see Judah unmuted.
Um, so less of a question, more of a. Which I know everybody wants to hear. To be transparent to the community, my overarching thinking in all of this is, um. What make. Coral school special is. People inside the buildings and that it's truly the, the staff, teachers, families and students that. Makes things important. So to be preserving as much. Faculty and staff as we possibly can. As reflected. This closure potentially, this closure. Saving. Saving our teachers and saving our staff. So what do we get to keep out of that, which we know we would otherwise have to cut if we're not closing a building? Who do we? As we're doing this? And. Think about. Giving back all the. What, what comes back? High schools, um, school, middle schools and elementary schools. That was such. Library, um, all the music. And. My, that is my long-term preservation of our faculty and staff and providing. Bring as much. Of the things that we've had to slice down because of budget, budgetary reasons.
And I wanted to add on to it, Judith saying really quickly because before that, a lot of EAs too. So I think that is felt from what we've been hearing in classrooms. Do as far as some of the supports that used to be there. Covid money that went away, which was a bummer, but, um, I'm just, it did show that it had results when there were folk in there and I don't know that we would ever get. But.
The, the, the hard part in those two, um, priorities is that they, um, impact each other. Ability to retain staff, um, in a lot of ways means, means we keep more buildings open. But by keeping more buildings. The services we provide begin to be, um, less. It's sort of what we've seen at our elementaries over the last couple of years as in has dropped. And so it's really this piece between how many of our buildings do we decide to close? And how, and how that impacts the numbers of programs.
Well, I'm assuming so like when we're making cuts, it's been. Most of that is coming from FTE, like that, that's going to be. Regardless, that's going to be. The. So to say even to the community a little bit that by. Building, here's the things that we are cutting that are not FTE, that are not our staff.
Kind of, I think, foiling off of what I was saying about the idea of what we could restore. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing and what it's prompting me to think about. Right now we use a model for figuring out how many people we need to be. On the number of kids that are there. And that makes sense. You need, you need enough people. But I think that the concept of restoring. It could come just as simply as in saying that one of the things. This consolidation process with is how do we give our buildings a little more flexibility by asking as part of the consolidation that we build in additional FTE to the remaining buildings? That don't fit into the equation, that don't fall under the, you need this many people, um, because this many kids, but say we need this many people because we need this much contact. I'll go to our libraries as an example, right? Are not open all day. And more kids in the building would theoretically maybe add a little. Because we've got another kids and so we need a little bit more in there. But what if we decided that what we were going to prioritize is when we close these buildings, we're back in that remaining buildings adequate library time? To say that's something that we are going to prioritize giving back. And I think that's maybe what, that's what I'm hearing you. Workforce multiplier that a library space is for a school. That's. Investment to say we are making a lot of changes and we're going to protect this sacred space that is. Place for so many kids. Give teachers another resource. I give kids another spot to be able to go and it doesn't matter that the rate. Particular building doesn't need seven hours. It matters that our kids in the building need seven hours of library, however many are there. They need. All day long. And so that's where we think about the long-term for student learning. Open for the whole school day. And I would like to see us talk about how we're going to do that. When we. And put more kids into a space, we need to reopen some spaces. To more capacity. I think I heard that in the community comments and that resonates as something that, um, may mean that we say. In the. But it does give us something back that we don't right now have another way to get back. So anyway, that's my thought on that and I.
My question, my question, I guess Teresa would be like, that sounds like. And so like, how do we, as a board, how would we guide that process?
I don't, we can't the process because it is operational, but the question right now is what are our goals for students? And so I'm saying that I think, I, it's not operational. A goal is we're protecting access to important learning spaces when we restaff. Absolutely.
In the community where you're coming from.
Yeah. We, because community, we can't tell the buildings where they're going to put their staff, but we can say a student learning out. Something that we think is important. And now we're. Schools, how are you? And one of the ways is. Think about how do we protect important, the spaces that the community has told us over and over are really important to the learners.
So to, um, maintain expectation, um, recognizing that the proposal that we had, that we brought to you still has about two million dollars in reductions and eighty-five percent of our funding, our. Standard dollars are on, on. And so to be adding people is with the initial. Challenge. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're sort of managing expectations around that, that piece or managing the expectations of the board around that piece.
Shauna.
Was it a direct follow?
Well, and I think that's one of the tensions that I know I'm, I'm holding, hearing. Me too is, you know, in terms of thinking about some of these examples coming up of what, what could. Station. A budget. Crisis in the community. That was something that community members also acknowledged during listening sessions, even if they came and said. Something that I like about the proposal or there's something I like about the proposal. And that tension of. Validation. Or. That I've heard from a number of families in the community is if, you know, Judah, back to point of, if we knew we were going to something wonderful where many of the, our children's favorite teachers were going. Or their friends were going to be there and they had more opportunities shift. Hard. We don't know what we're moving toward. And so that's something that I'm thinking about as I'm thinking about long-term goals. I know the innovation team is. Probably engaging. This forward and just wanting to also acknowledge that the timing of that will be coming after. A consolidation decision. And so it also makes it very hard to say, where do you best put your consolidation to? Best chance to actually be able to do things, feel innovative, that feel like there's the FTE to bring. Serve programs that are meaningful to students and families. And along those lines. Is, uh. Coming up is. The benefits of consolidation because we've been talking a lot about just consolidation. And so one of the questions that, that comes up for me along with that is, and I think, thank Erica. In public comment today, on the pros and cons of a K through five versus a K through six model. What does the research say? Could a benefit under what conditions of a K through six model? And so an ask that I have is, and I'll defer. Lou and to the board too, and to. Um, even in doing. Some basic literature review that I've done myself over the past couple of weeks and looking at what are some of the pros and cons of a K through six model? There are actually some benefits if the conditions are a certain way through K through six. So just to share a little. And maybe in getting if there's some messaging in the, the district as well around what are the pros and cons? What does? Chance for this to work? Um, there is research showing that there are actually stronger academic outcomes in sixth grade for six models. In reading map as well as standardized tests, fewer disciplinary issues, less bullying, better. School culture and climate in staying in that environment longer, a familiar environment. Comes. Grade mentorship. And that's contingent on some of the things that Erica brought up in terms of. Unities for students to have. Experience where they actually get to change classrooms, where they have a schedule that looks a little. Where they have access to some of that, that practice, maybe not of that full. They are. And those opportunities. So there is research showing that a K through six model actually can have stronger outcomes for sixth graders, but it's contingent on how. And what the resources are and what the opportunities are. Away because. Serving as a, a, a bonus fifth grade year, students aren't feeling like they have that growth, that opportunity. They're missing out on those electives on. Them prepare for that transition to school. So that was a thought that I had around. Understanding the district's perspective on that. And what are things we could look forward to if that model was adopted? And what are the risks? We also know that there are, there are needs in terms of teacher endorsements, certifications, specializations and models around how. But just offer that as something that I think could be for us as a board to understand as well as helpful for the community.
Sammy.
You. I will take a step at both questions, one and four. What are our long-term goals for student learning and community engagement? And I'll, I hope I will end with how do we define success? And I'll, I hope I will end with how do we define success once consolidation occurs? And disclosure, I'm going to cheat. The school board and the community spent hours on a document in front of me, which I'm going to reflect on. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine board goals. And I'm going to highlight a few things. We have four North Star. The goals we said. And by we is the collective, we, community, school board. Agreed that this is the document that will define our four North Stars that we. Be ourselves toward and the superintendent will be held accountable to get toward. And before we talked about this, as we said, student voice is a core tenet of school board. Should not predict or predetermine success in school. We want our students to succeed and have their voice. And success in school. No matter what their race, culture, socioeconomic or family status or national origin. Gender, gender identity, gender expression or sexual orientation. I know I'm saying things that are obvious for us. And we hash them a lot, but I want to elevate them because. This is. We do that. And what we want to do is going to help us with the North Star. Excellent learning experience where exceptional learning experience, all students. High level is number one, and there are five strategies there. Conflicting or challenges between goals as I reflect on those. The second mile post or second star is equitable systems. Want to transform our educational systems to be diverse, equit. Plurenary. Our decisions and actions create belonging for all students, families and staff. We have agreed on four strategies. That goal. Third, North Star is relevant and engaging learning. Students will. And relevant learning. Supports their short and long. Toward evolving future. We agreed on five. East. And this is important. There's a fourth North Star, healthy communities. We will cultivate schools and the district that promotes wellness. Social, emotional, mental. Well, being of student families. I did cross through some nuance in every goal. We have five strategies. The most important part for this conversation. Something we highlighted in the documents with asterisks and etalized what. Priority order. And if we have four North Stars. And now we have. A challenge or a problem or an opportunity. Myself about what are the long term goals is are the four goals sustainably being achieved year after year, long term. And I. Success once consolidation. That we're not sacrificing one all over the other. And we're not. Better words. I'm going to use the common saying, we're not being penny wise and a dollar foolish. I hate to. Thing I I teaching in a class about cost techniques. And. Money is not the most important thing in a company or institution is the only important thing. I believe the dollars to us achieve our goals long term and that. Wants us to reflect. Dollar value. We heard the community. It's not about the savings. It's about what we do with it. And I really appreciate Ryan's response about here's what you find some things. Measurable that we want to be mindful of. So to conclude what I'm trying to share. Enter the goals that we have agreed on for the years twenty-four to twenty-nine. And I'll be very mindful that any house or any techniques or any decision. Now will help us balance our prioritization of all four goals with each other and. Equitably achieve as much as possible of four of them, not one over the other long term.
Mine is actually a follow on on. Ask. In addition to K to six, you are proposing adding a K to eight. So I what I like to hear is what are you going to do with that program? What are the programmatic changes? What are the curricular changes that you're going to do? In our community. So well, there seems to be some sort of anti against Franklin. And and so. Calculating that, are we making a complimentary program when we make it to? So I. More about that and get more in in addition to what Shauna asked.
Those goals that are our questions that are up there. My question is more about kind of an overall basis of. What is our? Staff, what are our teachers saying with the consolidation? And how are we getting input from them? I know they were invited to the listening sessions, but I also know that. As a past staff member, that's not probably an avenue I would have attended to give my input. And so are we? In them involved because they are our future. And yeah, how are we getting their input basically?
Answers, but we'll just get started with them. We've taken. Middle. In the last week to talk about what the self plan proposal. How that would impact staffing. So we could get some questions for them about what's kind of on top for them. But that. One point in time, Ryan spent time visiting both schools to talk to staff to get their questions. I remember from Ryan sharing was that. The teachers are concerned about their kids, like what's. At these kids, you know, they've been. Us, we we know how to move them on to high school. We know how to welcome them from middle, but like what? What do we do when they're going? I think that is a concern that they have as far as their heart, but they are having opportunities to do some planning and talking with innovation team.
Yeah, so the innovation team. Thirty staff members on the team and. That group is not. Or different consolidation possibilities, but more about like. Future. Right now, that team is really thinking about the future of of education in Carvalis. Knowledge and skills we want students to have. I know some of you've got to partake in a few different versions of that. And so in that, though, what's happening is I'm rarely also getting. Text messages and chats and emails and phone calls from innovation. Staff members in our district who are like today. Of us sat and talked about about this thing. And so I've been keeping kind of like notes and like lists to bring to us from. But the other part where there'll be more voice for staff in our pieces that we're working on is. We're doing a backwards design from the innovation team, starting with where we want the outcomes to be for. Skills we hope students in our school district. And we're starting to get feedback on those on those pieces. And so there'll be opportunities for every single staff to get. Back on some of that work. We just started getting feedback like from the district. Of students. The first of December, all of our safe students will be giving feedback on that. We've surveyed two hundred and fifty high school students on what was great about middle and elementary school and what they would change. Learning look like for them and what should learning look like for them? And then staff will have those same type of opportunities to give that feedback.
Can I go back? Shauna's question for just a minute? I think that. One of the pieces that. It's that it's difficult for us to answer that question is because we don't yet know. What consolidation looks like. And in in that, what I mean is. Are you leaning towards the proposal, the proposal? You leaning towards going further in terms of consolidation as I shared before, going further and. Freeze up additional resources to. In a way that proposal wouldn't. And so I I really appreciated. The perspective earlier about what it's like to be a sixth grader. And we're trying to make sure that those pieces are robust and we're limited by budget. And so the piece that. Think for me to better understand. Would be that piece is our board. Leaning towards the proposal and bringing back information related to what that would look like with the. Are you looking towards deeper consolidation? And if so, what that proposal would allow us to be able to do because those two things are different. I think that's an important part of this conversation. And that is contrasted with what it means for another school community to close. And that is the piece that as a board, I think is the most difficult decision that you have to make. And that where I think the that's that's why. Question would be, I'd answer it differently, understanding that.
I guess. When you first entered this proposal, there must have been some thoughts given on the K to six model and. Why you pick a K to eight model for view? So so that that's not, that's independent. Our decisions is going to be. So I just hear the thoughts behind that and and why do you that would good? That was a workable.
So I think so. One of the things I think says interest. Just like I'm like assumptions about like research pieces like that. And so our growth and experience department and our like leadership team there. Actually a function of our jobs. Even through consolidation, just ongoing is to keep up on what is the best educational research? What is the best type of programming for students? I'd love to reference list because for months, same thing of what like, what is the best research and the pros and cons of K eights or K? Or K twos in one building and three fives in one building, right? And like we know from research, there's so many pieces that. For different things and different circumstances. And so really where I went back to in this. It's from like John Hattie's research. If we think about collective efficacy, that has like the biggest impact on student learning, the biggest effect size when we look at that. And some of the ways to be able to build collective efficacy amongst. Time and space and collaboration together. And the longer that you can create that time. Space and environment where that cross collaboration, that multidisciplinary approach, that creative sometimes with educators. You have a greater impact. And so part of the reasons when you think about K six or K eight. It allows for an alignment that can happen that doesn't necessarily happen in a K five or a six eight because there's built in transitions between. And so when we think about like the research you're talking about, conditions are right. Options in those intermediate grades that replicate more choice and scheduling. Educators can be better for maybe a longer, you know, a more educated. There that can help students from K through six or K through eight because K eight. And most research shows even has stronger outcomes than a K six. I think part of that, the nuanced. Educators have time to align and work together. So the eighth grade teacher can go down to the. Picture and learn how they taught numeracy when. Which maybe. Something at that grade. And so opportunity doesn't exist when educators are split up. And so I would go back to, you could find pros and cons for lots of different models. But when we can create conditions where educators can vertically work together across grades for a longer period of time. And get really aligned on what skills kids need to learn and what knowledge they need to learn each grade level. And then they can backfill and like know what didn't happen in the grade level before. The stronger outcomes we can have academically for. So I think in the research I look, that's what I look for. Versus some of the other pros and cons that are more nuanced by funding. Or things like that.
So I think some of my ask and maybe your. Was around, how do we? With families more broadly? So you've clearly done a lot of a lot of that work and and even just shared some of it right now, but in terms of having something. Thinking about rather than really just looking at. Very things coming up or sad things and hard things coming up. Are there things to look forward to? How do we know that? Under what can? Maybe asking for advocating for, looking for. So just.
Yeah, I just wanted to add into the part about long term goals for community engagement that that's one. Like sharing information a little bit more because I think that could help. Answer a lot of questions if we know if the community like that you all have been looking at this because. I was on assumption that you have been looking into these things, but there may have been an assumption because it hasn't been discussed that people thought. Been looked at. And so I think that those kind of things are important for community engagement. And with the. With the community, um, listening sessions and the feedback. How many families do you think we have in the district? Is there like a rough estimate for a number of families?
I think if you think families have one and a half kids. Students and we have. Seven hundred families, then I would do that by one point five or you basically thinking about families as that. And so.
Okay, I think that's. For people to think about because this this packet is representing a hundred. And that is not reflective of the majority of who's in the district. So when I think. How to call more in from community to contribute or to feel like. There's a way for them to contribute and I don't know what the barriers are. That's something I think that is part of the ongoing. That's probably, I think that we've been doing what we can to increase community engagement over the years. I just wanted to point that out because sometimes people think that that's like. If we. Did like that represent. Per thing that's still like way under the majority of families in this district. And so. I think that's important for us to think about both as a board and for community members that are reading this information. And I think we have a lot of stuff in the FAQs too that. That is also not in this packet too, but is there's some crossover in it, of course, but. Because this was about community engagement ones, I do think that this process still works though and has helped give us really valuable information. And that was one of the things. All with the goal. Kind of process. I still think we get really good outcomes out of it and people seem to have been okay with the goals we set through that process. So I'm hoping that it has similar results where we're going to come to a decision that. They can live with. I don't know if it necessarily means everybody. Because nobody wants to close schools and see staff go. And I did want to do a time check because our we are past. See where we are on the agenda though is. If I can find it, we have so many papers right now. Yeah. And so I mean, we're still. We'll still be okay if we another probably twenty minutes on. To the conversation. Can you have twenty minutes? Thank you. Yeah, well, they're not required to be here tonight and I already told them. Yeah, they can go at any time. Okay. I think we've been bouncing around on the questions. That was my other thing I wanted to point out to everybody that we don't have to go in order and we have not been. I think we've been going over these questions and I have, I wanted to do a pulse check for the board on. Are we still engaging in these questions? Are we doing more open discussion doing a convo? Because I feel like we're doing a convo. Okay. Are you all okay with still with? Okay, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page on the process for our discussion. And so we can chat.
So. I I appreciate. That we had. I also. Cause this word, we are information. We this is what. Quick search. I also found interesting information about the strength. It made me wonder if we thought about whether or not all of our schools should be K eight. I don't know how feasible that is, but if the model is as strong as some of the literature says, like. Really, why would we look at any other model? It was curious. So I also have an interest in understanding a little more about the. You didn't happen upon K six. You didn't happen upon K six just because that's where the kids would fit. So I would, not tonight, probably because we have nineteen minutes. Um, but I think it would be really valuable and I would appreciate understanding. What made that particular model stand out to you as opposed to, um, the other options that are. And I heard you, um, Ryan, maybe I'm wrong, but I felt like you were kind of maybe hinting at that we need to rip the band-aid off and say something about what do we think of this proposal? Um, because that needs to happen tonight. That has not happened yet. Read you write on that, that at some point you need for, to leave tonight with something more concrete about.
I mean, that's one of the questions up there.
It is, but then he, then he kind of, he said that, but then he didn't say specifically, tell me what you think. Like, I want to know, are we at that point? Do you feel like we are at that point where you are looking for us to say, this is what we like or don't like?
I think that's on there too.
What we like or don't like, I can't even read that from over here.
The supporter hinder the goals.
Oh, so I guess we're, I guess we are stakeholders and, okay.
Yeah, so I think that was.
Okay, so I'm going to jump into the deep water then and say that I think the proposal has some things important. And I, I don't feel like from what I've heard from the community, I don't think the proposal goes far enough in addressing our. And I think it sets us up if we only do this to be in a very painful position again sooner than we need to be. I think I would like to see a proposal that takes us a little bit further in closing the gap. And that closing of the gap right now, I think gives us the time to really think about a bigger restructuring of our district. We, we know is coming if the, the enrollment cliff is what it looks like it's going to be. So there I said that. I think we need, I think we need to talk about more cuts.
Jutta.
I'm glad Teresa ripped off the band-aid because I was thinking the same thing. Um, and. Horrible is that it's to say, I would rather see the cuts that we need to make instead of making a big cut this year and a big cut next year. And to have that transition happen. Rip off the band-aid instead of stair stepping painfully, making these, um, transitions to better adjust what we know in the next two years is going to be the budgetary concerns and concerns that we have on this, on the table.
Um, I would like to add in that it's not just our enrollment right now too, because we're like, there's other declines due to, um, state and federal matters that ha, are impacting our funding too. And so it's, it makes it even harder for the current proposal to make sense. Texts of what we're facing budgetary wise. And so I wanted to just add that in, not as like a challenge to anything, but more like, I do agree with you all on that. And I think we've heard from staff too that the, this caused a little bit of anxiety too, of knowing that there are additional. Um, I would like to add. I don't think I would go so far to say that we should put high schools on the table at this point. If, I would not recommend that, for example.
I, I'm strongly opposed to. On the table, but.
They won't, but besides that point, I don't know if. Because that's been another ask from the community is to just have that conversation now. And I don't think it's the right time.
I, I, I. I did want to just throw in, because I forgot to say, um, I am, I would be extremely concerned about. Two elementary schools and then having to redistrict all of our elementary schools. That the majority of our students are going through a major change.
And it wouldn't address the whole school issue in a couple of years. Sammy, your hand goes up.
Yeah, um, thank you, Ryan. We can ask questions off, ask questions freely. So I'm going to ask a question freely here. You heard, uh, that we may want to go more aggressively with the band-aid. Quick and. They say, uh, sometimes if you do gradual change, you're more likely to have stability. And if you go, uh, strong, uh, sometimes you have pendulum swing back at you somewhere. So I want you to sell me if I would. You gave us the capacity summary, this solves the problem here. What am I, what opportunities? Potential potentially for an additional elementary school on top of that? What about opportunity am I missing? And what possible instability other than creating boundary review, uh, challenge? Uh, other than creating an additional school culture and community replaced? Other than these two, is there any opportunities I'm missing from this proposal that you think is not enough for a steady change?
So I, I'm, I think what you were a, asking was. What opportunities going further would provide?
Yes, and are they worth the sacrifice? That we're going further than what solves the problem for the day and probably for a year or two or three.
Being to understand from the board, um, as you're, I'm trying to, um, give you the information to make an informed decision. I think that you, what you mean from going further is the possibility of maintaining programming in a way. Um, the current proposal does now. Um, the, the cost of that is again, the impact on a school community. Um, and at this point, we'd be talking about elementary schools. Um, because we've already made this. I, I haven't heard modifications to the K six model or the junior high. So I think what I'm hearing is that. Which would be the closure of an elementary school. And that, um, has, um, additional, um, c- c- community connection, all the things we've talked about thus far. Um, not trying to discount what happens in your middle schools, but, um, it, it tends to feel different to families when you have a five-year-old.
Um, in addition to that, do you feel the capacity summary for a model that. You put on the table, initial proposal plus an additional elementary school? Would the utilization with capacity adjustment still be manageable? Uh, are we going to increase size, less flexibility with class size?
I'd, we'd have some additional modeling. What I would think, um, is a couple of things. One is you would have, um, it wouldn't modify class size because class is a ratio that you have in that graph with a much light modification because it's on the average. Um, so that would be. In terms of the, the space themselves, um, I don't believe, I mean, we still have it built on the ninety percent capacity up to, um, and so I think we would want to look at well with as limited, the number of schools that are impacted. Um, so I wouldn't think the full boundary adjustment would necessarily do that for us or be need to happen. I think those are some of the other considerations.
Last but not least, you talked. With probably. Relation decline in student population. Is it unheard of where you have multiple, uh, consolidation steps within a decade or five years? Uh, like, do you see, like, some other school districts went aggressive one year? Was the hassle of doing it multiple times in a decade?
No, I think most do it, um, more gingerly because it's.
More gingerly, one time?
No, more people, a step approach because it's some change in the community. Um, but I can tell you that as an example, uh, Bethel, that's, um, is discussed here. Um, they, um, closed Clear Lake Elementary, which they did a year and a half before it closed. Back at the table, conversations about middle schools and are feeling like, gosh, I wish we would have done this all at one time. At the same time, decision because it's hard and painful to go through all of.
But think about like how we're talking about it too, like, I don't think we should use the term like hassle and. Um, just because it's, I think it's, it's hard in general. And so it's like saving, I don't know how to, I would describe it, but it, just how that landed, I don't know how that was for the community. So I just wanted, in general, more thinking. Words, I don't know why that word in particular stood out, but it did.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I'm not trying to call you out, Sammy, but I was just kind of like, I was like, is there another we can use? And I don't know if there is, but maybe it's just because it's so hard.
I, I think the word is grieving, like this is gonna, there's, this is a loss to our community. Every school in this community is cherished by the people who walk its halls and have graduated or have moved into a neighborhood before we're descending their kids there. There is no school that makes the most sense to us from how we feel about it. There are schools that make the paperwork side of doing this maybe a little bit easier. Um, or it might make it seem like, oh, well, this will give us the most return. But that language is all, that's Islamic language and we're in the land of feelings and we're grieving. I'm grieving that we're having the conversation, we haven't even made it. My, my heart is already heavy. Because I've been to one of these schools and I don't want to see our community not have any of them. And I also am very worried about the quality of education we can offer if we don't do a hard thing. And so I think that, I think the word is grief and I. Community, the community listening sessions were one space, the boardroom is another space. Whatever we do, we, we have to figure out how to carry this grief together because the alternative. But it divides and our kids are rough, but we can find a way to figure out a space where this will come at a cost to. This will look different, but no one is getting through this process without bearing some of the cost. And, um, that is hard and sad and that is grief.
Jutta.
Well, just, just to clarify what I was saying. And to jump on. What I don't want to happen is the community knows that we're going to have to take another big action. Everybody, there's swirling around and everybody about, well, what are they going to do for the next? Because they know we have to and instead doing it.
Or even rumors for years too, for that matter, go ahead.
Going back to discussion and, and something, uh, Byron brought up. We have, you know, it, we increased the, the, the time, right? From, from K to six or K to eight, that the, the eighth grade teacher or the teacher can look at it. But that presupposes. Have a steady environment where you're not changing the terms of that. Because if you're looking at a long-term academic change, programmatic change, curricular change, then we got to get resources as early as possible to make that change. Out additional need for disruption or changing course. So, you know, it's sort of like flying a plane. I, I don't know if you have, is a, a place called V one. That's a decision point where you decide to fly or you decide to down and, and, and line up for, uh, for takeoff again, uh, board to takeoff. But the, the thing is you pass that point, you're going to crash. Now, the other thing about V one and is also you got to make sure you may be able to take off, but you need to get into a sustainable flight. Keep going and, because it doesn't, it doesn't do anything if we just, you know, take off and then crash back down. So we, I, I was looking at in terms of resources and the bandage, uh, you know, ripping off the bandage and being as bold a move as possible because we need to buy that room for us to be, uh, in steady, you know, and, and, and we can continue to climb. And, um, I think if we do it, if it's not enough, basically doing a go-around and line up for takeoff and you know what that burns the most on a plane? Gas. Because now you're, you're burning additional resources, yet no effect at all. So I, that's what I, I am sort of, I, that's why I support the idea of looking at other options. And speaking of other options, also heard in the listening sessions, if you about, um, the K to, uh, K to six and seven to twelve model. What about area, uh, those both middle schools? Now we have that long runtime that Byron was talking about. And I know there are also studies out there that says the effectiveness of that model as well. So, so, uh, I think we should look at all options, not just, uh, elementary school.
It's like a really technical question about capacity too, I think with the, with the. Numbers in the high schools, right?
We've done, we've done. The, around a couple of those other models.
I seen Shauna, did you have your hand up, Chris? How about Chris, Shauna, and then?
This is so hard and, um. So much. I worry about, like, I, I first heard the seven, twelve model, I was like, absolutely not. I can't even imagine putting seventh graders next to twelfth graders. I mean, if you look at developmental, that, that's huge. But if you look at a, a model of seven, where it's really two different rooms in one school, then. I don't know, like, that's an, an option I, I think to look at. But at the point of the game, I'm just worried. We've done all these community meetings based on closing a school. Now we're talking about doing some others, which I agree, that's. Is important and that we, as mentioned before, look at how we're going to reserve and save so that next year and two years, we're not doing additional, additional cuts. And that maybe we can look at a strong program have at what, at this time. But I, but if we're looking at very different models at this time, at this point. Like, what kind of, I just, what's the community going to say? Give them time to respond to that as well? I mean, there, it was some of their ideas as well.
I just wanted to point that out, Chris, that from community that this one is not doing, feeling like it's doing enough.
Yeah.
And so I think that we have heard that feedback and the consistent thing that I know that in a lot of my responses and even in messaging is that this is a, that was an initial proposal based on, uh, Ryan to bring us one option. That didn't. What we, and that's been a very consistent message from both the board and, um, and communications. And so I think that people would. Is the. An initial proposal that could be modified has been the consistent message. So while I do think that people would be surprised if it was a different one that came to the board. Have a first read on, um, we've been pretty clear that, that was not necessarily what we see at the end. Just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Glad you said that.
I forgot, was it you then? It was you and then Sammy, was that right? Okay, sorry, I was like, I should have wrote it down. We're also thirty-three seconds left of our extended time. Just wanted to, we're going to let it turn red so I can see how over time we are with this conversation.
Thank you. So I, I have a short series of related questions. And just in terms of thinking about where to start on this, I really appreciate picking up, wanting to look at. I'll say deeper cuts, but looking at how to put more of the cuts into consolidation efforts that preserve staff. Right, we heard from a researcher today that this is bringing up a lot of anxiety for staff, hearing that across the board. Because any consolidation comes with reduced FTE as well. And I think one of our goals is that we are putting more of the cuts into building. Of FTE as well as possible. So in, in my questions, I just named that. Any if scenarios that come up also feel very heavy in terms of saying if this closed or if that closed, if this happened. Um, we are talking about more school communities. So my series of questions. You addressed this a little bit earlier and I just wanted to make sure it was really clear. When we're thinking about length of. If a school were to close next year and that was where the cuts and the consolidation cuts stopped, the rest. was where the cuts and the consolidation cuts stopped, the rest came TE, how long would it be? Do you estimate? Have to have of an elementary school and then same vice versa. If there were one or two elementary schools that was this year rather than middle school, how long would it be in projections before we were having the conversation again about a middle school?
Kim can correct me if, Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that you're probably going to be back at the table in about years to have another conversation about some sort of consolidation.
Okay. So within three years, we'd, we'd probably be looking at both unless something changed.
I, I would think so.
Okay. Another question, last year and. It's late since we've had this year's budget conversation, but we had, I think it was about three million dollars cut last year predominantly from staffing. And I know that some of that came from, I don't want to make light of, of any cuts to staffing, but some of it came from natural attrition of needing fewer class. And I know that the numbers that was brought out was specials. I think it was about $800,000 was cut music wise or, or to other specials and some was very, very apparent to students and families in terms of the experience that students have. Some felt, even though we're talking about people losing people because some with natural attrition in the classroom. When we think about the four million dollars that we're looking at for this next year, we know that now from all of these just very helpful estimates, two million dollars in consolidation savings. We know that some reduced FTE as well. An elementary school, Anklin is included in that because of the cost savings is about a million dollars. And so as we're talking about the need to look at. Might be, what, do you have a sense of the level of cut that would be that, you know, it may not be a full four million dollars because we're also looking at some natural that aren't going to impact student experience or family experience with the school? Do you have a sense of what cut in consolidation would help preserve? Maintain a status quo of services and people for students and specials and options versus to add?
That's a really hard question. Um, and I'm not trying to skirt it, but, um, in the middle of October, with all of the things that happened during school year, um, to be able to say that, I think that you position yourself in a, in a more positive way to maintain programming, um, by ma- making a deeper, um, deeper cut at a point in time. I think you are aware of maintenance, there, there are positions that are lost when you close schools, that to be the case. But in terms of maintaining programming, um, that we currently have, it puts you in a really strong position to do that. If not, the ability to bring back, um, some additional, um, program. It's, I think we're, we're close to either one of those by going further at this point.
Okay. And so just in thinking about that, just wanted to chime in and affirm what other members have shared that it, I think it's important to look at, at least to consider what deeper cuts would look like, whether that was, um, and, and, and I just even hate to say that, an elementary school or looking at some of the other models that cuts, not necessarily to consider changes happening all at once, but some, another ask that I've heard from the community is, and just a concern is how, this has been a long process. I know that there have been so many steps that have come with this and the piece that the community feels the most deeply from the consolidation proposal was announced to the decision feels like the shortest amount of time for the heart. And so a question that I've heard from folks is why wasn't this brought up or why wasn't it planned earlier? If we are looking at deeper cuts, I think a piece of that should also be considering something comes to the table. I know it may not preserve things for the next year, but weighing out the cost benefit of looking at one and one cut that is planned, that deepens that consolidation cut that saves staff in a second year, we know it's coming so that staff know it's coming. I know there are pros and cons with that too, but just to put on the table that in thinking about deeper cuts, wanting that to be a consideration for next year as well as just thinking about what a phase, a phasing could look like if there would be helpful aspects of that.
The two things I know, I understand about that, one is the, um, process that Bethel went through and they made a decision about in mid-March, um, not for, but for the year that and the amount of, um, unrest or concern that that school went through for a sixteen month period of time was super challenging. Um, the other thing about that is, uh, the other consideration is that, um, by identifying like which building that would be, we're, we're kind of, we're having a similar scenario to what, um, have had in the rumors about schools for a while. And those two things are concerning to me. Um, again, I'm. Things that I think are important considerations. Um, and I understand the, um, pace of this and the pace of it is really meant to get the information to staff as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Um, I even, you know, spoke, can you just tell us now? And that was a month ago because they just want to know. And so there are those pieces in terms of trying to, um, come in, um, holding people and also coming in and, um, having a decision so people can understand it. Again, that's, I can see both.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And I think, and thinking if we had a phasing, my thoughts would be being able to name and know exactly. And I'm, you know, students at different schools who may have an extra step, an extra school switch, whether it's a different middle school than they expected, or in the middle of their middle school year switching, or consolidation, thinking about those students and if they were feeding into calling already, they're switching to another school and then going there versus those who they switch from fifth grade, elementary school, sixth grade, and then into seventh and eighth. So just trying to think of a pair of families and students and minimize the number of transitions students would have to go. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Sammy, I just wanted to, um, there was, um, something you said earlier, Ryan, about, about staffing. And I think that we're asking for two different things from Ryan right now, asking for him to bring a, a plan that going deeper, we're asking him to retain as many, to retain staff. You can't do that necessarily, right? Obviously there's, it's just impossible to do both. And I wanted to just name that because I don't pretend like that's not true. And, um, and I don't like that. Also say that, but I just wanted to bring it back into the reality of what there are to. Um, and I also know that there's a lot of staff that seem like, um, that. There are losses to staffing in buildings that people may not have partnerships to like staff or custodial and things and people like that, that are also necessary staff. Um, and so I don't want to just think of only teachers in these conversations too. All different levels. I know that in that building, there's staff besides folk that people are, are in here that we've lost over the years too, that we don't see anymore. Maybe the school board might know because see them and interact with them, but they're gone. And so I think every time that staff is hitting all the walls, not just one area. And, um, I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that was also said. I'm just trying to make sure things are said here in our conversation. Sammy?
Thank you. I'm going to preface. Know is that I want to acknowledge what you just shared and also share the seriousness that my colleague, uh, Hawkins have shared as well. I want us to commit, I believe we are at the V one level where if we want to add bills and widgets, we either we're taking off, going around the runway. So I will ask a few questions. The first one is a good opinionated. Ryan, how early in the year would you recommend we engage in a boundary review study and a boundary review, uh, process? If we would do that, how early in an academic year for the next year to be in effect?
About this time would be when you would need this.
About this time?
Um, which was, um, which was. Sorry. Kind of. In front of me. I was. All right. Um, I've just been sitting here a while. Um, I think we would need to be, um, up to that right now.
Yeah. I was in that process in 2019. I, uh, interviewed folks who were in the midst of it, uh, in the thousands, uh, where I believe Jefferson Boundary, I believe that was in discussion at the time. It was brutal. It was challenging. It was a cost. So that's my opining there. That mind, I have a question for any additional, uh, consolidation or cuts. We want to propose that's appear to be rationally, you gotta go elementary, go high school, you can't go another middle. You gotta go additional elementary, two elementaries, you're going to impact your capacity. Elementary sounds to be the only rational possible path. But I want to ask, what is the cost, additional cost need to add for us? Not cost money only, time, capacity, labor, emotional labor, all the things that my colleagues, my colleagues mentioned, which is, uh, costs you can't, cannot capture with money. Uh, the conversations that to get to build the trust. This is the best boundary review plan that to commit with all the discussion that we're adding right now. I believe we're at the V one speed and if you want to engage in boundary, you need to really plan ahead and. And layers over each other makes me question. So my question is, what kind of additional costs we need to engage in to fully implement an additional elementary school closure that's may entail? Um, uh, boundary review. And it's an open question to answer now or we can say, maybe we need to come back to the drawing board.
I think that you would need to look at, um, like I said before, honestly, you would look at, um, decisions. Had the fewest, um, schools impacted. Um, so you'd be looking. And building and where those students would attend and looking at all the board. I think that you would have to look at it at this point in time.
Thank you. Does it make any sense to do a gradual closure, uh, since we're see that this is going to be critical in three years? You start with the K one, then two, and then five, uh, and eventually you close the school. Is that a model that you have seen?
With which is fewer classrooms in a school and resources get thinner and that's, um, has a, has an impact and the savings doesn't quickly. So you're not able to, um, build up the thing that you have in schools that have a higher density rate.
Okay. My curiosity.
Add one that, um, Ryan just said too, um, with goes with what some of you have said. Um, in our department, we think about mental health and wellbeing for students and staff and families and thinking anticipation of grief and grief are two different things. And so you basically could set up anticipation. Name impacts grief and then when something happens, then the grief cycle as well. And that, that's a lot. Um, right now we're kind of the anticipation and then once decisions are made, then there'll be another grief cycle too. So that's the thing to think about.
I've been through this before and what I would tell you also is that when you close a school, it doesn't only impact that school's staff. When we apply the contract and the bargaining agreement, it impacts teachers. We're looking at their seniority and their missions. And so we will be looking at moving staff across. You draw that out, it's going to happen more than one year.
For those reasons, I feel, I have three questions that will help me evaluate between committing to solve that we have vetted with the community. It appears to me it will work. It appears to me it will work for, uh, short and medium term. Long term, we don't have enough data, but it looks like long term, we will need to have another decision. Invested really great resources to know how we can make it work. The only reason I say, let's have a pause, let's slow down, go around the runway and have another plan can fly with is three questions. Honestly, I'm not sure I have clear answer that it is worth it to go back to the community and say, let's do it. But I hope you. My understanding is different. The marginal gains and marginal gains like the additional benefits we, all elementary school closure on the school board goals and programming. Is it significant enough to justify right away? What are marginal gains on staffing? FTE, how many savings on FTE, if any, we are going to get in one elementary school? How many benefits we're going to get for retaining programming for closing one elementary school? Also, is this sheet going to change significantly enough to? Additional numbers are going to be the same on the, uh, capacity summaries page. So these are the three things I'm really curious about. As it stands now, I don't see the marginal gains are significant enough, but please, I want you to feel comfortable to say, no, we believe the marginal gains on school board programming, saving FTE, uh, and impact on community and the capacity is really worth it, uh, to actually navigate that and put another school name on the, on the, on the table.
Put that question right back to you.
I was, I was just going to say, I don't think that's. Staff. It doesn't feel like it to me because of the information you're asking at one time and.
Yeah.
Have that information readily available and we're, I don't know if that's a question for them, honestly.
So maybe it's a regular question of have that information and we're at the V one. See, I'm ready to come about exacerbating that expectation of grief and say, for this year, for the foreseeable future, assurance for the community, we're going to get this right as best possible. Let's not have the perfect be enemy of the good. Or the other way around.
So we're. A proposal.
Right.
We don't even have a first read of a proposal. I think what we need to do is like ask Ryan, we have to come with some kind of way to ask Ryan to bring us back or just bring us back or find or he needs some kind of direction because he's not the one who's actually deciding. We're deciding and we need something in front of us to decide on. So if it's that, if it's already proposal, original proposal of one that we asked him to bring, or if we're asking him to bring a modified proposal, I think is what to know tonight. So we have something to look at. And so I think we need to start moving in that direction with this conversation. It's getting to that point, but, and does that make sense? I just, I don't know if they can answer that without data in front of them right now, unless they have the data off the top of their head.
So again, I'm. Decision to make. So I understand where you're, you're wanting me to be definitive. And that's, um, what I can tell you is that it helps with capacity because you have schools of more students in each one of them because there are fewer of them that are, um, that are running. Um, what are your other two questions?
Uh, FTE, are we going to save more FTEs being cut?
You will have fewer FTE because you will close two schools. So that means that you have fewer people, you'll have fewer principals, fewer office staff, you'll have of all positions. Um, less so with teachers because you'll still have the same number of students and or ratio for class size. Um, and then in terms of question you asked, um, it, it would allow you, it would allow the district more flexibility in programming as you would have made the cuts that you need to make for the most part by consolidation rather than, um, just through staffing process and the budgeting in the spring.
And roughly we're talking million dollar flexibility of program.
We, um, that we save about two millions when we close a middle school and about a million when we close an elementary. That is about four million. Um, so it gets us much closer at an early period of the school year with a lot of changes to come.
Thank you.
Teresa, I seen your hand up.
Teresa, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I kind of Lou summarized what I was really leaning toward. Discussion right isn't to decide if we want this proposal, it's to decide if we think we have enough information from you to make a decision. I see an, that would let us, the pros and cons of all those gains or costs that we've been talking about. What do we get if we close an elementary school, closing more of that gap? What do we give up if we close an elementary school even if it closes more of the gap? And I just don't see how we can do that if we're comparing this to an imaginary proposal that doesn't have any numbers on it. No, you have that information. And so I appreciate, you guys have done so much work already and it's, it's hard, it's all distilled down to pieces like, you know, snippets that go out and so that, that doesn't communicate maybe the hundreds of hours that have gone into thinking about what are we going to do? So you've done that and it is a big ask to come back and say, can you go and get a little more information for us and tell us about an alternative scenario? But the one thing that's clear is that for $2 million is more than $2 million. We have a bigger number than what this proposal can close. And it would be irresponsible of us not to at least ask you to, to show us what would happen if we tried to close a little bit more right now in a way that it seems inevitable that we're going to have to do it anyway. And I think we have three years. I really don't. I think we probably two years before we will, but we certainly don't have five years and it's going to take that long for this consolidation to work their way through and that we would just be doing it again. And so I, I would like to see another proposal and I, I think the community would appreciate if we saw another point of to make a decision that we will have to live with for a very long time.
I need to do like a clarification that if we're asking Ryan to bring a proposal, that doesn't mean we're choosing between proposals on a first read. We're going to have a first read of something else. It wouldn't be clear because we're asking to do a first read then vote and so we would have a first read on something else, not the proposal that's, not the original proposal, correct?
Thank you for clarifying that, yes.
So that's where, I want to make sure that that's really clear for the community too. So it's not like both of them, if we ask you to bring us something else, you're going to bring us something for a first read or it's already outlined. And I just want to make sure that that's very clear for everybody because I think sometimes we know what we're talking about and the community is listening and they're like, hey, you said you were going to bring two. That's not what we would be asking Ryan, we'd be asking him to bring something else.
Yes. And I want to just take a moment and give a nod to Lou because something that you do really well as chair is you make sure that the language at the table translates to the folks that are not sitting back here. And I really appreciate that because we are not, the way that we are, we summarize things sometimes misses key pieces and it does, it misrepresents. So I'm not saying I can't to choose between them, I'm saying I would like a first read of something else entirely and then we'll have discussion about it because that's the process. So thank you very much for being attentive to that.
I appreciate that clarification as well.
Did you have something, Shawna?
So just, just more clarification in terms of process. So if we're asking for that moving forward, which would, well, another proposal you've said, and I think what's come out is about deeper cuts, the potential of an elementary school. So just in terms of, would that mean naming an elementary school and actually having conversations that potentially disrupt even, even in that possibility, a school, just so we, we understand the impact?
I think that's important to do. It's hard to do. Hard to doing that. But I think it's important to do because that's the way we've moved forward with this thus far where we've had the opportunity to go, I've been able to go talk to a staff before they heard it during a meeting. I think that's important because we also established a care room for staff after having been, we had London ask questions. I think that those things are still important with whatever proposal you're asking me to bring forward. And so for, to me, I think that that, those are important lessons learned that I'd want to be able to.
Thanks, Ryan. I think I just wanted to firm on our end so that we know the impact and even if an updated or a new proposal forward that did not, or just the impact even in the interim of, for families, for staff, for students as well. So for taking that, that care and really being personally as well and making space for staff.
I think it's important that with that, we're trying to maintain our timelines. So this will be sort of a quick turnaround, but I think that's where we're at.
Is there any other board comments?
I just want to remind the community and people that this is really, really, really difficult and we are all deep in our hearts. And I know Ryan and your whole team, it's the same. This is not what you want to be doing and I know it's difficult because these are, you work side by side with and it's going to affect their lives. And as we mentioned, grieving, grieving is really difficult and it's really hard when we're doing this, you know, and, and we as board members are called evil people and other names that I just want the community to know that this is not easy for us and that we have worked really hard and diligently to figure out what's best and to do this the best way we can, knowing that it's really difficult and we don't want to be making these decisions, but we are. And so appreciate that you're thinking about the personal part of all of this and how difficult it is.
This is the most difficult work I've done in my 27 year career.
Yeah. Wanted to piggyback off what Chris said that like board members are also personally impacted by the decision we're making and I think sometimes people forget that. And so, yeah. You had your hand up, Sammy?
Yeah, really want to appreciate. Thank you, Chair. Again, I want to echo what Teresa said is to really center the language. I will support the will of the board. I want to share my reservation about proposal. Willing to commit to a proposal, to whatever on the table as long as it's worth. If I would recommend right now, I have sufficient for a first reading. If we would have a school name proposed and already been discussed by those conversations, that conversation, the teachers, classified staff and the students are going to have with elementary school is a cost we have committed to. That's a decision we're making right now. I will support that because there are some marginal benefits that might be making it worth it if we commit to. But because of that costs and because of my inclination and I, I heard Ryan really clearly say like, we have lessons learned where people really wish they have done everything together like Bethel, they want it all together at the same time. I'm the mindset of we can't not really. In 2018, we had a forecast of how the school district would look like. We had a pandemic, it changed the whole pattern. And I can't, what will happen in three years now? Because of those reasons, because we have done, personal individual recommendation is I do have enough to commit all the costs that we have incurred, incurred for what we can do. But if the will of the majority of the board is to explore, I will support that for the reasons. Benefits and all we incurred, incurred very important grieving costs that you cannot recover from there. Even if we pull back, they're going to think about it, they're going to anticipate it for the next three. And that neighborhood school, that community members in that neighborhood are going to anticipate that. So that's where I want to say, I know first read and then second read and then it's formal decision. Personally, I, I believe that's, I need to commit to a plan and at this stage with the information. And I feel this is enough information for me to commit with, but I'll support what we'll go.
Do we, we don't need to make a motion though or anything, right? Does anybody want to, I mean, I don't, do you have enough information?
I have direction.
Play in on this conversation of what you're asking, of what we're asking?
Or I guess maybe a question is, has anybody not shared like it's important for Ryan about before we, before we move on?
I would say, Ryan, that thing that hasn't come up, I don't think is having information about possibilities if you're bringing us a proposal, which it sounds like you are with, that goes a little bit further, some of the benefits with that. Like you talked about them a little bit, but I think it would be helpful in bringing something forward to us that that's included.
Perfect, okay.
And I just want, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Little question. Because of some of the comments that I've heard at listing sessions as well as seen in some of the reports around, you know, even things like going back to the K8 model of where another K8 model would live. So just a question, I don't know if this is an easy question to answer, it doesn't have to be in this moment, but thinking about which building is the best to be K8 building? So a question that came up, I see on the stoplight report is, well, could Sheldon be the building that houses a K8 versus Mountain View? And I see that that's, it's yellow in here in terms of there would be some significant costs with that. But a question that came, thinking about some of the benefits of different, wondering if that's a relatively easy question to ask and which buildings could be converted with maybe minimal modifications to K8 versus those that can't? Because there were also other asks around Lincoln, about this school or?
I think it's more about capacity and programming to the fit of a K8. And in our bond program, we added the art science rooms in every elementary school. So those, those are the, the school more usable as a K8.
The thing, Mountain View as a specific, it has capacity for 200 more students than it currently has, significant amount of space available. And so that's one of the, one of the considerations of that. Also, and five-year-olds coming into that, it's pretty expansive. And so some of those considerations as well. So that while there's potential that some could be, could become K8, I'd also be cautious about how many K8s we create because then again, we start to lose our ability to provide programming.
Seeing less about more K through eights versus where is the best fit?
Yeah. And I was kind of including Bernie's question in there too.
Before we move on to the next thing, I just wanted to, and I know that this is not easy and we asked you to do, and now we're asking, I wanted to recognize that that's a lot of work on you that we're asking and supporting the staff with this ask and to say thank you for going that direction. And I know it's not easy and for all of you up here either.
Yeah, my team's been working really hard to answer all the questions that are coming in. The FAQs are almost a full day for to complete because of the information that we need to put into them. So I just appreciate the folks that I work with that does make it this, this task easier.
Y'all are working overtime on it. I'm on that. But thank you for bringing something to us at the next meeting to look at. Oh, wait. It's not that we didn't, I just want to make sure that was clear because when we're asking, it looks like, and I think we heard from the community, validated action as a reminder of the agenda, are anyone have a question about? You have a question, Sammy?
It'll be very brief, personnel action for a question. So Chair, I ask for your permission, questions about retiring decisions. Then to recognize and problem for school district, do I have permission? This is going to be awkward, on your service, I would like.
Okay, well, I wasn't thinking it would just. Work in this district for, and aided the staff that I've, throughout that, we've had to work, staff is extremely, to work with and I've worked with great.
Jennifer, thank you. Chair, points of personal privilege acknowledged over the, and served Jennifer's leadership and really ability to weigh whether or negotiate or navigate it over the years. That's, I just want to say, about earned retirement.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Not so much.
Okay. Anybody? Is there anybody, would anybody like? Motion. It's been moved by Sammy, any for? By Sammy to adopt the consolidation as submitted. Judah?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Shawna?
Teresa?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
May bow, aye. Motion. The agenda is consolidated information, reminder the items under this portion of discussion. I do have one member comment or two, just so you all know. Very short though. Review of our, about like how we want to do that. Is that something we can look into? Maybe the board leadership can chat and come up with something. Is that okay with you all? Because I think some things have changed in them, either at the state or national level perhaps that we may need to update on some of our stuff. So just having a review of the proclamations we read. Okay. And then the, the next one is about the, I think it was 20, was it 2021, the last time?